I'm Melissa Fisher Isaacs. I'm the Information Services Supervisor here at Lawrence Public Library. And the library is really excited to partner again this year with the League of Women Voters of Lawrence and Douglas County to bring you this four-part civic engagement series. Just to give you a heads up about the next parts that are coming up in the series. Part two will be a forum with the city commission candidates on Monday, October 2. Part three will be Monday, October 16, where we'll learn about how legislation goes through the Kansas Legislature and we'll get an overview of recent school-related legislation. And then we'll wrap up the series on Thursday, October 26 with a deep dive into school finance. A heads up that this session is being streamed over Zoom and it will be recorded and made available on the library's YouTube channel. We ask everyone to be mindful of speaking into the microphone so that the folks who are watching at home can hear what you have to say. So with that, we'll turn it over to Carol.
Well, welcome to the candidate forum and thank you to the library for co-sponsoring with the League of Women Voters, this opportunity. I'm Carol Williamson and current president of the local League of Women Voters and I'm pleased to moderate the forum. Candidates, thank you for being willing to stand for office. I'm supposed to speak into the microphone, sorry. Thank you for being willing to stand for office and participating in this public information forum so voters can be better prepared for the election. You have one minute to answer the question. I think we've told them that several times. The order of response for each question has been established by a random draw and responses to the question will begin with a different candidate in order of seating. That'll all become apparent. The candidates receive the questions prior to this forum. Audience, thank you for seeking to be informed voters. If you need a list of candidates or voter information, handouts are available on the back tables. There are also note cards if you just need something to write some notes on. The November general election, in the November general election, you'll vote for one at-large seat with a two-year term. And the candidates for that seat are at my right, Ms. Minor and Ms. Kimball. You'll also vote for three at-large seats with four-year terms.
Four?
Four at-large seats with four-year terms. Thank you. The other nine candidates will be running for those seats. The candidates will introduce themselves. And our questions and candidate responses should conclude about 7:15 or 7:20. So the candidates will be available so you can visit with them individually after that time. So let's get started. The candidates will introduce themselves and respond to, what is your motivation to run for the Lawrence School Board? What do you bring to the school board? And we will begin with Ms. Minor.
Good evening. I'm Ariel Minor. I'm here because I'm fiercely protective of public education and I want to stand up for the children in this community and the adults that work alongside them every single day. I bring some experience in classrooms from my time as a substitute in elementary, middle, and high school classrooms, which I think is representation that is missing on the board. I believe there's an imbalance of power, which is undermining democracy on our school board and in our community. I would like to work to bring transparency, honesty, equity, accountability, and oversight to all areas of the organizational budget, policies, and procedures. I think we need to look deeply and more critically at leadership to improve health and restore the reputation of Lawrence Public Schools. I have four children in this district and I'm proud to live in Lawrence.
Thank you. I'm Shannon Kimball and I'm running for the two-year term. Lawrence is one of the greatest places in this state to live and raise a family. We value equity and diversity and that's evident throughout our community and our schools. We believe that every student deserves a high-quality public education and that is what motivates me to serve. I care very deeply about the students and families in our community and their futures. We have a lot to celebrate and be proud of in our district, including things like having achieved the highest graduation rate in 16 years. But of course, there are still challenges to be met and overcome. To meet those challenges, I bring an extensive background and experience as a board member and a public education advocate. I have done years and years of advocacy work across our state, in our community, and even nationally in support of public schools. And those are skills that are going to be critical to the future success of our students. We've had to make tough decisions to be able to reach these successes and I will not shy away from that at the board table. It's what makes it possible for us to improve education in the futures of our students and to keep our excellent teachers and staff in our district. And I look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Anne Costello. I'm the parent of two children in the district and a wife of a teacher at LHS. So I understand how school board decisions can impact both our students and staff. In the years leading up to now, I've been a member of our school's site council, the superintendent's advisory board, the Lawrence Schools Foundation Board, and the Futures Committee, all as attempts to see firsthand what it is that's happening in the district. The problem is, there was very little impact that I can make from those positions. So I'm running because I want to make an impact. I believe that every student should have access to a high-quality education. Through those experiences on those various committees and boards, I have learned a variety of skills. I've learned a lot about school finance and how the district operates and I will bring that knowledge with me. I also have a lot of career skills such as managing a budget, working with the team, and listening to all that I can bring as well. And I want to work to close the achievement gap, increase teacher-staff support, increase transparency, work with the city to draw families to the district, and advocate for full funding.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Coronado. My motivations for running for school board, I've said them many times, they're my four children. My four children who, a month before we moved into our home, they had their school closed. My four children who, in the two years since, have had their school threatened to be closed each year. My motivations for running are very few but also a lot. There are about 10,000 of them because I've seen the way that Cordley Elementary has welcomed my family, has welcomed my students, has welcomed my kids, and has made us feel like we are part of the family. And I want to make sure that every single family in USD 497 has that same experience without having to fear that funding is about to be cut for the things that they love and the communities that they appreciate. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Carol Cadoo Blackwood. My pronouns are she/her/hers. My motivation to run for school board is that I grew up here. I wanted to give back to this great community. I obtained all of my public education here in Douglas County, Kansas, including starting my educational career at Sunset Hill Elementary and then getting an associate from Haskell, Indian Nations University, a bachelor's from the University of Kansas, and a master's in social welfare with a clinical focus at the University of Kansas. But I have been involved with Lawrence Public Schools for nearly 24-plus years. I know that makes me sound really old, but these include volunteering in the classrooms, PTO, site council committees, the Native American Student Services Committee, Girl Scouts. I was a Girl Scout troop leader and I advocated for public schools for all of our populations. But my career and passion for public education grew as a stay-at-home mom at the Wellard Domestic Violence Center. I realize that getting to the root of the unique system factors can improve social, emotional, and mental well-being for achievement and outcomes. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Jody Meyer. I have three children who've attended Lawrence Public Schools their whole lives. They went to Broken Arrow, Billy Mills, and Lawrence High. One is a junior at Lawrence High and the other two are at KU. I've been a practicing attorney in Lawrence for 22 years, focusing on family law and child-related issues, including juvenile offender, truancy cases, and some special education issues and the like. I've been a substitute teacher in USD 497 for two and a half years. I decided to run after experiencing the frustration as a parent and hearing frustration from other parents, teachers, and community members regarding the lack of communication and transparency in the district. I've become very concerned about the excellent teachers who have left the school district due to the way the district has managed things rather than just leaving due to pay. The greatest challenges for the school district are attracting families to USD 497, managing our budget, improving our academics, and completely revamping our communication systems.
Hi. My name is Rachel Sembler-Bear and I am running for the four-year term on the school board. I have been a resident of Lawrence for 14 years now. Moved to Lawrence in order to go to KU, married my husband, and we decided to stay. I became more interested in what our Lawrence Schools were doing when my son started high school and we were helping him try to decide on what his classes were. And I thought, hey, this would have been really great to have all these class options when I was starting high school. And from there, I started watching the school board meetings and I'm very excited to see all of the innovations that our school district is doing. And I don't think that our community is aware of all of that. And that really drove my motivation to run. What I'm going to bring to the school board is a fresh enthusiasm for this work, the willingness to put in the time and to reach out to the community.
Hello. My name is G.R. Gordon Ross. I'm running for reelection to the school board with four-year seats. I'm a 25-plus-year Lawrence resident, have five children, three graduated from Lawrence High School, two are still there. I've served on the school board for five years and I bring experience on the facilities, negotiations, and boundary committee. I have a passion for public education and a passion as a community volunteer. What I would bring to the board is to continue the work that I've done of advocating for wages for our staff, providing the tools and the time for them to do their jobs effectively, and to help make sure that our students have the foundation that they need to succeed in the life that they choose to live once they graduate and leave our care. And that by continuing to work together to do that, we can ensure a bright future not only for our students and our staff but for our community as well. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Edward Gonzalez. I am running for the board for multiple different reasons, four of which are my wonderful sons, two actually have special needs. So that's a special interest of mine to make sure that we're always having avenues for funding for that and that sort of thing. My journey to run for this campaign started off with just conversations with teachers and seeing how the school was being ran. And there was one glaring issue, transparency. They didn't know where the district was going. They didn't know how their job was going to be impacted. All they knew is that they were getting more and more students, getting overcrowded, and not getting enough money. So those are some of the bigger features that I'm trying to pull for them is to understand that the teachers deserve more money. They deserve to actually have some breaks every now and then. What do I bring for the school board? I bring my master's degree in business and I have several different budgeting options from different jobs that I've held. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yolanda Franklin. My motivation for running for the school board is my five grandchildren that are in the school district. And I just got sick and tired of being sick and tired, of not understanding what's going on, what the decisions that's being made with our schools, why schools are being closed, why budget is being budgeted the way it is budgeted. And I just got sick and tired of being sick and tired. What I bring to the board would be that bridge between myself and the community so that the community understands what's going on with the budget the same way that I need to understand what's going on with the budget.
Hi there. Brandon Moore. I know it says an asterisk that I'm not going to be here, but hi, I'm here. So my motivation for running is we've lost a lot of really great teachers and we've closed some really good schools. I don't agree with all the school closings. I understand that some had to happen based on the budgeting issues we had, but I don't know that we closed the right ones. And the teachers that we've lost, it's heartbreaking. And I don't know that we've made the right choices there. What do I bring to the board? I've got a lot of business background. I've been in the restaurant business for 20-plus years and I understand how to run a business and how to work a budget. And I don't know that we have that right mindset on the board right now. So, and I don't have the outside ties that are clouding the judgment that we have on the board right now as well. So, appreciate it.
Thank you, candidates, and A++ for staying on time. Our next question is about success for all students. We'll begin with Ms. Kimball. What's the role of the school board in ensuring all students can learn and succeed?
So, a high-functioning school board can help a district soar for its students, but a board that does not stay focused on the big picture, on the district's mission, its vision, its strategic plan goals, that board can and will hinder the success of students. Board members do a lot of essential work in their roles. They are first and foremost going to hold the district accountable to the community's strategic plan goals. That is something that our board has been doing. We evaluate and hire the superintendent. We set district policy. We monitor student achievement. We allocate resources to meet those strategic goals. And we do all this with integrity and transparency. Board members can't be focused on single issues or be focused on bringing grievances to the board table into every conversation that you have because you have to be focused on the big picture. I've done that work extensively and with every decision, I always think about how it will help us do a better job of ensuring success for our students and a better workplace for our staff.
Okay. So the school board plays a crucial role in ensuring that all students can learn and succeed. Its responsibilities encompass setting policy, providing oversight, and making decisions that impact the educational experience for students. One of the primary functions of the board is to set policy. It should communicate our district's core values. The school board should also hold district leadership accountable for student outcomes. This involves setting clear goals and benchmarks for student achievement, tracking progress, and acting when necessary to improve educational outcomes. They should ensure that the curriculum is culturally responsive, inclusive -- sorry, I just lost my place -- as well as promoting equity and diversity to address all the achievement gaps, reduce disparities in resources and opportunities for students, and create safe spaces for all. We must also, as a board, provide equitable funding to support all students. And it's our critical responsibility when overseeing the financials along with providing PD to help serve our students best.
The role of a school board in supporting students and ensuring success for students is simple and that is one word. It is support. Our kids have to feel supported. The way that they feel supported is by local building administration knowing that they have the authority to make the best choices for their own schools. Teachers knowing that they can actually teach. It means not having one Spanish teacher for three middle schools while she is also managing part-time subs. Ensuring success for all of our students means that they really do have the resources that they need. Means that a high-functioning board really is focused on the strategic vision and mission of this district.
USD 497 must systematically continue to systematically use a race, gender, and sexuality equity lens in determining all aspects of the district program, including policies, curricula, personnel, practices, budgeting. Our decisions should include a student-centered approach that affirms their strengths, their challenges, and their experiences while upholding and enforcing the Ganna versus Kansas decision. We must continue to work on closing disparity gaps in achievement for all students and expanding opportunities. These should be addressed over the next four years. These will include students who may be failing in areas such as English and excelling in mathematics. We need to establish protocols for students to support and engage these students. Another priority would be safety. Thank you.
The role of the school board and student success is to first create high expectations for student success. High expectations, not lower expectations in order to get kids to graduate, but to maintain those high levels of expectations and to adopt programs to meet those expectations. The board should also evaluate the district programs and determine if those programs are achieving our goals and expectations. And that means if they're not, not being afraid to say it's not working and get rid of a program or not adopting a program because it's the most popular new thing. The board is to budget responsibly and appropriately to make sure funds are expended in a way that benefits students the most. The board should create policies and procedures that are based on common sense, that are easy to understand, and create the least amount of red tape possible in accomplishing the goals. The school board should also engage and educate stakeholders by creating clear communication lines and transparency.
The role of the school board is to provide the best educational system possible within the financial limitations of the district. This is done through communication with community members like the students, teachers, parents, and concerned residents, studying and frequently reviewing district policies, being informed of current educational practices, and establishing a yearly budget.
The role that we play is multifaceted. The most important role that we can play is making sure that there is a dedicated quality instructor in the classroom because there's nothing more important than a supportive adult in the life and well-being and the success of a student. And then making sure that educator has fair compensation, has supplies and time that they need, and opportunities for growth to get better. The second thing and the duty that we have is to monitor the outcomes of our students, to monitor to make sure that the policies that we put in place are having the desired effect, that they're moving in the right direction, evaluating those outcomes. And then, as has been stated previously, if they're not working, to make adjustments. And as we make adjustments, we need to be willing to admit that things didn't work and change course. And we need to create an environment where every student can feel loved, valued, and successful.
I'm going to go rogue here a little bit and go off of my page. It's great to hear that we're looking for high expectations. I mean, that's what we should be pulling for our school board. Accountability is a huge piece to that puzzle, but the fact of the matter is, is that we have teachers who can't even breathe in their classrooms because they have so much work, so many students. We have classrooms that are two classrooms, second grade, third grade, first grade, kindergarten. That doesn't allow for those individual students to actually have that one-on-one attention that every teacher would like to give. In interviewing every single teacher that I have, that's what they want to do, but they just don't have time to do it anymore. So being on the school board would be to make sure that those teachers know that we have their back, one, that they're going to get paid, two, and that they're going to have the time to address all of our kids' needs.
I believe the role of the school board is to create a welcoming environment for our children to want to learn, to want to succeed. Give them the resources that they need to want to come to school. Our truancy rate is high because our children don't want to come to school because it's being bullied in school and things are not being addressed with our school board. So that's the role of our school board is to govern our schools and not overwhelm our teachers and make our children not want to attend the only safe space they may have to go to every day. And if you make that safe space unsafe, then I wouldn't want to go there either. So our role of the school board is to make sure that we continue to make a welcoming environment so our children want to learn and want to succeed.
Yes. So Mr. Gonzalez and Ms. Meyer, yeah, I completely agree with you. To add to their comments, I view the school board in the way of a business because that's my big background. The school board is a board of directors. We hire a CEO, which is our superintendent. He hires his vice presidents, which is our principals. And our role is to hold those people accountable. They set their strategic plan on how they want to do it and we approve that and choose whether or not that that's the right direction. We set the budget. Oh, I died. There we go. We set the budget and make sure that that is the correct course and we have the right focus and the right areas. And we make sure that that is the correct path for us. The number one thing that we need to ensure is that we have a livable wage for our staff and that we're in the top 25th percentile for pay for our teachers or we're not going to be able to attract and retain our teachers.
So, school boards create policies, oversee the implementation of the policies to support student success. I also look at school boards to be the protectors of students, staff, and teachers. Many of our district leaders say they are pro-public education while they close our neighborhood schools, send our public funds out of state, out of Lawrence, to other companies and consultants, accept donations from foundations that are not pro-public education, and our community is left with a very dysfunctional system that is not prioritizing student success. You don't have to be an expert to know that something needs to change here. Students need healthy environments to learn and feel safe and we need to revamp the management of our school district and partner with our city leaders and community partners to come together for the kids and the future of Lawrence.
Thank you. Our next question is on budget and we'll begin with Ms. Costello. What are the greatest challenges to fund the school district and what are your budget priorities?
I think the greatest challenge to school funding is the Kansas Legislature. They're sitting on a record surplus if they refuse to fund special education at the statutorily required level. When you look at the base aid per pupil since 1992 and you adjust that for inflation, it would take a 55% increase to the current base aid just to match inflation. The legislature does not value public education. You can see it in the funding levels and the bills they propose to provide vouchers for students to use at private schools. I will be a strong advocate for our school district at the local, state, and national levels, working to secure the resources and policies needed for our students to thrive. I understand the importance of fiscal responsibility and I will fight for responsible budgeting that prioritizes resources where they are needed while minimizing waste. Resources should be focused to enhancing student learning, supporting academic success, and reducing achievement gaps. I will actively support the needs and well-being of teachers, staff, and all school employees who play a vital role in our education system. This includes competitive wages for teachers and a living wage for classified staff.
I think the budgeting problem is twofold. First, on the one hand, yes, absolutely, we do need to get into the legislature. That's part of what my colleague here, Carol Cadoo Blackwood, does is she goes and actually speaks to state legislature. She speaks to the governor to make sure that they're loosening those pocket strings a little bit. It's why here at CUPS, we're working on building a statewide movement, not just local, so that all across the state, we have people working to fund public education, but that's just one part of the problem. The other side of that coin is that a year ago, we were promised that if we closed schools and we fired teachers, we would have all of our budget needs met. And now we're raising taxes. A year ago, we were told that we just need to make these small changes and the fact of the matter is, a closer look needs to be taken at the budget on every single line to make sure that the money is being sent to our students.
Thank you. Balancing the budget will continue to be our greatest challenge and yes, we can sit here and point at Topeka and thank you, Kevin, for acknowledging my advocacy work, but I would also like to also add that I've met with Senator Tom Holland to bring in big business, big corporations, big jobs for Kansans. But what I would like to do as a board member, I think that we would be able to audit, monitor financial data to reduce management of USD 497 funds and to restore a trustworthy budget. And yes, we can say that we gave our teachers a historic raise. It was historic. We closed two schools, raised taxes. And for an example, one teacher who gets an $800 raise, well, sure, she has an $800 raise, but her bill will be $64 a month. That's $768. So she did get a historic raise of $32. Thank you.
The greatest challenge to fund the school district, obviously, is persuading the legislature to give more money to schools. As we all know, historically, that has been very difficult. The legislature just tends to think that we're given a lot of money and we mismanage it. I'm concerned that as school board members, we should be trying to persuade the legislature rather than just sort of disparaging them all the time, to use data and evidence to show that we're not mismanaging funds and that we are using things appropriately and then we need additional funds for things like special education. I think it's very difficult for any non-incomitant candidate and also maybe incumbent candidates to give an opinion about what in our district is being spent appropriately because the budget information is so difficult to get out of the school district, even on a micro level. I've tried it before and it's impossible. Aside from state funding, I think the school district needs to revamp their fundraising and donation policies to allow more outside sources to help fund discretionary items, which in turn frees up money that the district has to spend on other things. Our budget priorities have to be ensuring teacher and staff salaries are competitive and spending resources to improve our academics.
I also agree that our legislature is our biggest challenge. Doing the research for this question, roughly 66% of the school district's budgets comes from state revenues. from state revenues, 24 from local revenues, and seven from federal revenues. Our state is also supposed to fund 92% of special education costs, and they are not doing that. Which means that our district has had to reallocate funds that would typically be in the general to make sure that everything is actually getting paid for the way it should be, so that nobody's, for special education, that our kids are receiving the services that they need. My budget priorities are to continue to make sure our staff's wages are competitive, but then to also make sure that we are looking at the programs that we are using, that they are, that we're evaluating them, that they are helping our students.
Two main challenges to funding the district budget. The legislature has been talked about extensively, and then also looking at reversing declining enrollment. As enrollment goes up, we can adjust. It impacts, along with other things, how the school funding formula impacts our budget. Budget priorities for me would be the same reason that I'm running for the board, to continue to work to increase wages for our staff, to provide those staff the tools and the time that they need to do their jobs, and to continue to focus on providing the means for students to be able to succeed for whatever life they choose after graduation.
There's a lot of things with the budget that we've talked about already, from legislation all the way down to how we're managing wages with our teachers. As I said before, that's gonna be one of my bigger focus points, is making sure our teachers are actually getting paid the amount that they should, but I think there's something to be said about how top-heavy we actually are in the district. Our administration accounts for a large amount of our budget. We have a superintendent that's making well over six figures and continuously gets raises, which, I don't know about you guys, but if I did a subpar job at my job, I would not be getting a raise, right? The thing about that is, is that we need to be holding them accountable to what they are actually pushing forward through, and that's one of the things that I will push for, is that transparency and holding the administration accountable for policies.
I agree with my counterpart here as well. A lot of things about the budget has been discussed, but have we stopped and asked the community about the budget? Have we got the community's input on how funds ought to be allocated, how they ought to be spent, what school we ought to revamp, what we ought to do this? But we haven't asked the community anything, but we're asking them to raise their taxes, and we're asking them to raise, to allow us to raise the mill levy up again. Okay, so the community helps with our budget, and so why don't we ask the community their input on our budget? That is one of the priorities that I'm gonna be building, is bringing to the school board, is being that bridge between the school board and the community.
The problem with that is we didn't ask the community to raise their taxes, we just did it. The problem that we're having is we're heavy on admin. We extended the superintendent's contract in an election year when it didn't need to be extended until next year. We need to increase enrollment. We need to increase our pay for teachers. The board members that are sitting here, you're the reason why our teachers are underpaid. You guys have not done anything to fix that until an election year. We should not be giving tax breaks to millionaires. We just gave it tax breaks to Doug Compton, $200,000 plus for him to build his headquarters downtown. We need to make sure that we're giving our pay to our teachers and the classified staff, and we need to stop being so task-heavy, I'm sorry, top-heavy with our administrative staff, and make sure that we're giving the administrative staff that our building administrators need, because those are the positions that were eliminated.
Special education, not fully funded, very challenging, yes, but our district is also not fiscally responsible. We're told we have a budget crisis, we have no money, and then they turn around and spend half a million dollars on a new curriculum that gives teachers more work to do. They also turn around and give district employees that are paid the highest raises for nearly the exact amount that we are saving from closing a school. Budget priorities for me would be no new programming for a bit and stabilize things. We have new teachers that need to get comfortable and need to feel supported. Keep our public dollars as close to the teachers, the staff, and the students as possible. Remove any waste from the budget. Get everyone to a living wage, $16 an hour. Complete financial transparency. Schools are underfunded on purpose in Kansas, it's not an accident, it's been happening that way for decades. We cannot afford to have leaders who have other agendas.
So we all know the role that the legislature has had in creating funding challenges for the district, both general ed funding and special education funding. You know, those challenges aren't gonna go away, but the good news is that there's already a statewide network working to advocate around those issues, and they have been for quite some time. An advocacy movement built on partnerships between local advocates, better part of Game On for Kansas Public Schools, KASB, KNEA, Kansas PTA, our local chapter here of Educate Lawrence, special education advocates all over the state, and those advocacy efforts that I have been involved in personally and have supported are having an impact. It has made the governor make special education funding and a glide path to fully funding it a priority. My priorities will be wages for teachers and support staff and high-quality instruction. And I promise that when I commit to staff wages as a part of approving a master agreement with both of our classified and our LEA unions, that I will vote in favor of funding the budget and the LOB that will make those raises possible, and I will do that every single time because it is absolutely necessary for the health and success of our district.
Responses to the next question, and we'll begin with Mr. Coronado. What's the school district's, the school board's role in attracting and retaining high-quality teachers, given declining enrollment and budget challenges?
You know, even as soon as about five or six years ago, we have never paid teachers very well, let's just be honest here. But even as recently as five or six years ago, Lawrence was still a community that teachers wanted to go to and that college graduates applied to, and that teachers would move here from other cities, from other districts, to teach here. And now, we're seeing the opposite effect happen, and we don't have to speculate about it because they're putting out opinion articles, they're taking interviews saying, "We don't feel supported. We don't feel like we're appreciated." And you know what? I think I agree with them because it took our classified staff eight years of fighting with some members of this school board to get their historic raise, and we need to actually support them.
USD 497 must work in partnership with community nonprofits and other business partners to develop unused public land to build affordable and workforce housing for our community. We have a great relationship with Peaslee Tech that works to ensure that our students are college and career-ready. Those relationships can be expanded to Haskell Indian Nations University in support of our indigenous treaties. The district and community can flourish when we have a living wage, healthcare, and stable retirement plans that our staff deserves. Our classified staff is the backbone of every public school. And my parents moved here in 1978, just specifically for the schools. Thank you.
The school board plays a crucial role in attracting and retaining high-quality teachers, not just in times of declining enrollment and budget challenges, but all the time. The school district must find ways to offer competitive pay in order to attract and retain staff. But just as important, the school board must take action to improve what I would call quality of work-life. I know some of these may sound small, but attempting to decrease class sizes, increasing or at least not decreasing planned time, which is a big issue right now, not having enough planned time, talking to staff personally, not through some badly worded surveys that get some out, are some of the ways to make the district more attractive. Creating less administrative red tape, a recent example, teachers at Billy Mills Middle School wanted to use the Broken Arrow Gym, were told no. When I inquired what was going on, I was told there's like a four-step process to ultimately use any part of that facility. I would also suggest that school board members take a more vocal position with some of the city and county commission decisions because at the end of the day, teachers decide to live here based on the quality of the city itself.
I think it's fair to say that COVID has changed our lives, everyone, and we're still dealing with the ramifications of that. It has influenced education models more than anything. We have high school students who, having adapted to doing school virtually, finding that they had more time to pursue a job or pursue other things, having to go back to a traditional model where they're in school for the most of the day, isn't necessarily what they have in mind or what they think is best for them. I think at this time, our school board needs to be innovative and look at the different models of how we can offer education to our students, listening to our students for what they are looking for. I think we especially should be investing in our virtual school.
I think attracting and retaining highly qualified staff is a priority of the board and has been for a while. I'm committed to continue to maintain and fostering an active, healthy, and productive relationship that we currently enjoy with both of our staff unions. But I also think, given the current environment, that we have to look beyond pay as we look to find a balance. I think one of the ways that we can do that, that I would do if re-elected, is to look at, one specific example, is to look at how the district handles leave buyback, is something to establish. And then I also think that with the historic raises last year, we can already see the impact of that on our staff. When we look at rehires this year, we can see that in the staff that came in this year, the number of rehires this year, both in classified and certified, was higher than it has been substantially higher than in years past.
First and foremost, we need to reinvest in the education, the continuing education of our teachers. There's a lot of teachers that would like to specialize in one area or another, and when we find that passion that a teacher has, we need to go ahead and push forward with it. So by reinvesting in them, they become more willing and able to do more for us in the district. And then that also helps improve our declining enrollment because now we can actually show different districts, different cities, that sort of thing, that we have these people who are specializing in XYZ, and when we have leaders in that area, we can pay them a livable wage that allows them to do more for us as well. So, thanks.
When I moved here in 1996 with my four children, I moved here based on the enrollment rate at the schools and how there were smaller classrooms and a lot more one-on-one with the kids and the teacher and the not overwhelming. That has drastically changed in 20 years that I've been here. And so, to attract and retain any high-quality teachers, they're still here. So what do we need to do to change to keep them here is what we need to be trying to figure out, is how are we gonna keep our teachers here? How are we gonna increase our enrollment? That's what we need to figure out.
You know, the number one way that we are gonna be able to attract and retain high-quality teachers is to continue to support the pay increases necessary to put us in the top 25th quartile in pay. Guess what? Every school district in the state of Kansas has the same legislature, meaning we're all getting the same, we're all in the same process. They're going to other school districts within the state of Kansas. It's not because of the quality here. This is a Lawrence issue, this isn't a state of Kansas issue, guys. We need to make sure that we're providing the right benefits as well. I would challenge some of the comments that this board is retaining high-quality teachers. We've seen them leave. You all have seen them in the papers, writing their comments and the reasons why they're leaving. Maybe we sell some of these multiple properties that we have now sitting on the market and deteriorating. What happens when you close a building that you own? You sell it. When you move out of a house, you sell it.
The school board is responsible for making sure that the highest-paid leader is doing a good job in overseeing and managing employees. Teachers cite district leadership, district administrative leadership, as one of three specific reasons they leave this district. That is a big deal. Poor hiring practices do not help this. Replacing teachers costs $20,000 to $30,000 for each loss. It didn't used to be this way. Teachers and principals did not flee the district like this. We're told by board leadership that retention here is better than that national average. That doesn't mean things are good here when national numbers are bad. We can do better, we shouldn't keep lowering our expectations. I'd like to see data on how many families have left in the last five years also due to district administrative leadership and problems with receiving special education services. The school board needs to improve overall district health, and we will find solutions to retention and enrollment problems.
So I just want to say at the outset that the data that we've collected as a board does not support all of the doom and gloom comments that I've heard across the table today. Are there opportunities for growth? Absolutely. The board has been leading in this area by listening to what our staff have been telling us. We have asked them, they have given us feedback, and we are listening to them. The number one issue that they have cited has been pay. We have taken historic steps to correct that this year. They want opportunities for growth in their profession. We are undertaking opportunities for teachers to be leading redesign work for curriculum and instruction, which is really important to their satisfaction, job satisfaction. They want more support from the district. You can't, on the one hand, say that we are too top-heavy in administration, and then on the other hand, say that we're not meeting teachers' needs for support from the district. Yes, our teachers need support from the district administration, and we need to have good people in those positions to do that work. In addition, smaller class sizes, that is something that we are gonna be able to achieve over time by reducing the largest class sizes we have in the district through the budget work that we've been doing. Thank you.
Obviously, attracting and retaining teachers is a critical job of the board, and the best way to do that is to show them that they're valued. So we need to make salary increases a priority. 4% of teachers got zero raise last year, and those were teachers with 13 years or more of experience. So we need to reevaluate the matrix and what it takes to move to the right on the matrix. We need to create a supportive environment, value their contributions, give them opportunities for collaboration, foster a positive culture. Morale is critical for retention. Smaller classes, seek their feedback regarding policies, curriculum, and professional development. And we need to spotlight the good that is happening. We need to celebrate our wins. Those are important. And on the superintendent's advisory council, last year, the biggest complaint that I heard was salary. This year, they're talking about support from parents, support from the community to have their back and support them.
Thank you, Carol Cadoo Blackwood. Yeah, just to preface this, I have been a strong advocate for climate change, and it actually came up on my feed four years ago that I was downtown on this day protesting and voicing my concerns about climate change. But in March of 2020, the Lawrence City Commission adopted Ordinance 9744, which established a goal of 100% clean renewable energy by 2035. USD 497 can create and develop a a goal of 100% clean renewable energy by 2035. USD 497 can create and develop a climate in an adaptation plan that can mirror the city's plan. And to my colleague, I proudly voted, I was the only board member to vote no for tax incentives for first management. But moving forward, it would benefit the district to require companies and our city, we would require companies to have energy goals and practices before they approve tax breaks or incentives. Thank you.
Anybody who knows me knows that I'm very much a straight shooter. You can ask me anything, and I'll be very straightforward. And so, to be quite frank, this school district has many pressing problems that need to be addressed, and the energy efficiency of the school district is not high on my list. I can't stress this enough, how we have discipline problems, truancy issues with the closing of schools. We now have classes with large amount of students, which is exacerbating existing problems. We have teachers getting overloaded by reduced planned time and having to incorporate what I would call other non-academic programming. There is no simplified system for communication for getting questions answered. It's difficult to find out where the buck stops. On the facilities and operations side, we have facilities like at Free State, the athletic stadiums are crumbling, and other buildings are in disrepair. Does energy efficiency matter? Yes. Does that take precedence over the other issues that are driving families away? No.
This was another one I had fun researching because I wanted to know what our district is doing. As has been, or Dr. in your book has presented recently, they're working on a solar plant pilot project over at Prairie Park. And then if you have been reading the consent agendas, you will see that our school district has already been updating the HVAC systems, making sure the heating and cooling is updated in every single building. I reached out to the director of transportation to find out what type of buses we have. Currently, they are gasoline, but they are already in the process of working with First Student to do a grant to get electric buses. All of these are things that our district is doing currently, is in the process of. So our district is working towards all of these. As for a timeline, with all the updates to technology, I don't think that this is something that's going to be done at any certain point. I think we're going to have to keep being aware of the new technological changes in order to keep moving forward and getting better.
As was stated by Rachel, the district is already well underway in doing some of this work from the facility and operations, leaving that way that our last board meeting, we approved the pilot solar project at Prairie Park, which is just a pilot. We plan to implement that and then do more solar projects beyond that, also using the data from that project in the classroom and to enhance student education. We've been using both bond dollars and ESR dollars as we've replaced LED, replaced halogen lights with LED lights, done smart thermostats, done energy-efficient HVAC units. We're also looking, as we replace fleet vehicles, to do electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles where appropriate as well, and then also working with First Student on the grant to replace our buses.
As already stated, the district has been doing a great job with moving forward with renewable energy sources and that sort of thing. But I think the bigger problem with that is that you have to go digging for that information. So we go back to the topic of transparency. I think this will be a great time to actually utilize social media for this. The National Attention span is something like 60 seconds. Our best app right now is TikTok, which most of those videos are less than 60 seconds, right? But there's no reason why we can't leverage that and actually showcase these new endeavors. I, for one, would love to be able to take that on and actually show what the district is actually doing well and promote that more and more.
I agree with Jody. The energy efficiency is on the low priority list for me. We're in the middle of a big budget crisis, according to the papers and the consent agenda. We are in a budget crisis, and so doing the energy efficiency now is not feasible for us at this point. We have to maintain what we're trying to do now and make sure that the schools are safe for our children. So doing energy efficiency now is not feasible, and it's not cost-effective.
I commend the board members that are up here on the work that they've done with the energy efficiencies that we've done so far. I agree with Mr. Gonzalez. We definitely need to be working on highlighting those. I mean, you guys have done great work on that, but we haven't, what have we done to advertise that and say, hey, look what we're doing? But I definitely have to agree with my other two. We've got a lot of work to do on our budget, and we have things falling apart left and right, and I don't see it being prudent to our budget to spend a lot of money on these things when we have stadiums falling apart, and we have classrooms that have light fixtures falling down off the ceilings and, you know, ceiling tiles falling on students' desks. We need to focus on those things, and then let's focus on the big picture after that.
I just want to say Save Our Schools was the first group to bring this idea of solar to administration. I think moving to renewable energy should be part of the district's strategic plan. It is currently not part of the strategic plan. I think it would draw people to the Lawrence community. I'm glad to hear the working with First Student busing to go electric. Closing neighborhood schools increases emissions from cars and buses idling in long pickup and drop-off lines. I propose we sell the ESC building that's worth over $7 million to free up capital outlay to invest in solar. Solar farms, larger plots of land, are the most cost-effective way than to sprinkle panels here and there on buildings. School district in Minnesota, that is just a third of our size, will save up to $6 million over 30 years. I think this would be good for the environment, the district financial health, and the city health.
So I'm actively involved in working in this area as part of the district's Facilities Committee, and the great news is that we are leveraging capital outlay funds, which are not general operating funds. That's separate. We can't spend capital outlay on teacher salaries and supplies. We can spend it on buildings and projects like this. So doing that, solar pilot project at Prairie Park is a great example of leveraging capital outlay funds so that in the future, we will see savings in our general fund from reducing our energy bills. We are working with people who are very knowledgeable about the regulatory and statutory environment in Kansas. We cannot build a solar farm here and benefit as a district from the energy that is produced because of all of the regulations and rules around how energy is sold back to the companies, and there's a lot of details about that. We've looked into it, and it's just not feasible. I'm glad about the work that we're doing with First Student. I think that we need to continue to look at these areas where we can leverage capital funds to create savings and also make sure that our district is being responsible in helping our planet, taking care of our future, but also helping our bottom line.
So I think it's great, all the things that the district has been working on, but I agree, we need to celebrate this progress. We need to call it out. This district suffers from a PR problem, and in order to draw more students and more teachers, we need to celebrate our wins, as I mentioned. So let's talk about these great accomplishments. My only concern with the EV buses is we can't hire bus drivers now. So rather than spending that money, should First Student maybe look at increasing the pay of their bus drivers? And it's not just us. Johnson County schools are facing issues as well. They've had to cut back on bus service. So I think these are things that also need to be considered. And while I do believe in the green movement and making progress there, I do believe that there are other budget priorities that probably will take precedent.
Thank you. This is, in fact, a loaded question, as we can tell by the varied answers, and the school district has done a fantastic job to this point of taking those community initiatives like solar panels from Save Our Schools and actually making progress with them. It's actually really good to see that there are things we can make progress on when we really care about them. I want to do more of that. I want to hear more from the community because a group of so-called experts doesn't have all the answers, no matter how much knowledge we may have. The community has answers. That's part of what this great project called American Democracy is, is hearing people's answers
I think the answer is yes, and it would be hard for us to believe anyone would say no. You know, regarding teachers, I think the thing that I come across, I know a lot of teachers over the years, is that they just don't feel like they're being heard. Now, sometimes, of course, having a voice as a stakeholder in decision-making or any other thing is, you can be heard and not impact the outcome, right? So sometimes, it's the process more than anything. And I think with teachers, again, we go back to the communication and streamlined process for being able to communicate that, I think, is what is important in terms for them to be feeling heard. And also, now, I'm a supporter of the teachers' union and the parent union, but not all teachers are in the unions either. And so those teachers, I think, need to have a voice as well. And the students, I think, we do do a pretty good job of having stakeholders. I was sitting here thinking how to engage my high school student. Maybe the Douglas County Commission adoption of the $25 for a meeting would be helpful. I'm kidding. We don't have money for that.
I absolutely think teachers and students should have a voice as stakeholders, and I think there should be multiple ways of which they can communicate, not only with the school board, but also with administrative staff. I know that the district already does surveys with teachers. That's how they decide to plan on what priorities that they're going to focus on. I know that the superintendent has a student committee that is there, that he gets to talk to and get an idea of what's going on. I think that this needs to be continued as well as putting together a feedback forum specifically that staff and students can reach out directly, not just, not so much for complaints, but that they can weigh in on the decisions that are being made.
I think we're just going to build as we go. Yes, absolutely, staff and students. You know, we talked about the unions and the superintendent's student advisory committee. We have specific issues-related committees. On Monday, the board's going to hear from the middle school redesign committee that has staff and the community and input. And I think ultimately, any decision that we make should receive input from as many stakeholders as we possibly can to see what they have, but also understand from those stakeholders that that decision will impact what they have to say so that we understand the impact of, between choice A and B, to help us make an informed decision.
So I'm going to say no. No, I'm just kidding. So yes, yes, of course, these two advocates groups should actually have a voice. I want to be that person that can, like, reach out to them and promote coming to school board meetings and that sort of thing. But I also think that it also starts with us parents. One thing I've always tried to strive with my boys is to share my appreciation for government and the political process and that sort of thing. So getting them involved in school board meetings or creating groups at high schools that could levy these decisions to bring them to the school board, I think, would be great. And I think that's one thing that I would focus on a lot more is to get that kind of attention, not only at the school level, but also at home, starting with my four boys and just letting it reach out further. Thanks.
Yeah, I think with UGR, it's going to be yes across the whole board, that they do need to be stakeholders in the decision-making, because every decision that we make affects students and it affects teachers drastically, not minute, but drastically. So when we decide to close schools, it should have been a teacher's decision and not a district's decision. I don't care where the money is not coming from or not going to. Nobody asks the teachers or the students, was it okay to close their school? You know, I had a seven-year-old grandson that cried because he thought that he was being bad in school. It's the reason why he could no longer go to Broken Arrow. He didn't understand that it was because it was the district's decision to close his school. He thought it was his fault. So this is something that we need to definitely be making sure that teachers and students have a voice in the decisions.
Okay, I got a lot to say about this, and this is an audience participation question. First of all, how many of you have kids, grandchildren, or know a child in the school district? How many of you, keep your hands up, how many of you have a child, anybody in the district, that has spoken to a school board member? One, two, three, four people in the audience. They don't count. Four people in the audience. Is that a stakeholder that's actually getting communication with the board? Not really, right? So we need to do something about that. Important, understood, energized. That's when people are most effective, if they feel those three things. Absolutely, we need to make sure we're using our teachers and students. That is critical. We got to get rid of the third-party consultants. We need to get in the schools. We need to talk to them. One-on-one conversations, having those informal conversations, that's where we find out the information, not committees.
Absolutely. Teachers and students should be the primary voice. I've heard teachers say less programming, and then they get more. I've heard them say, we need more adults in our buildings, and then they cut 50 positions. We want smaller class sizes and more planned time, and then they get the opposite. Teachers are scared to speak. I think that we can show them they are priority by building trust and using their input to make decisions. I just want to say one thing about the redesign committee. I have four kids in this district, and because they're not the right ages right now, I did not get to fill out a survey. I wrote a blog about the redesign, an informative blog, and I was told by the superintendent that it was misinformation. I think we need more policies that are democratic. I think we need more accessibility. We need to turn on YouTube comments. Some people can only tune in from home. If we foster an environment where teachers' voices are heard, students will naturally be encouraged to.
So the short answer is yes, of course. And there are a number of ways where this is already happening, and of course, these efforts should continue to be supported, evaluated, and their impact expanded to the extent that that is possible. I, in my experience, teachers are not scared to speak to board members, nor are parents or students. I hear from people in the community every single day. Board members do engage with building staff and students. We visit schools. We engage with students. I just met with a student last night from the LHS budget to answer her questions for an article that she was working on. These are the kinds of interactions that we routinely have as board members and that we use to help inform our decisions. We have had a participatory process in our policymaking. Our dress code policy is a great example of something I worked on where we had, that was student-initiated, and then student-informed, and the results were student-supported. So I think that there are ways that we can always expand those opportunities, but they do exist, and they are happening.
Obviously, yes. Hearing from both of them is invaluable. If we don't already, we need to ensure that all committees have representatives from teachers and students. We should be holding regular meetings with them to talk about key issues and gather input. We can conduct surveys. In addition to working with our students and teachers, we need to build trust within our community. We need to cultivate a connected culture. There's a relationship between engaged parents and an engaged community and student success, and we need to find a way to foster that. We need to be open to feedback. We need to make ourselves available to have conversations. The current model at the board meetings is not interactive. I would like to see more meaningful discourse between the board and the public. All voices need to be heard, and I am committed to engage with the teachers, students, community, and listen to their concerns and build a partnership in order to support our educational goals.
Yes, teachers and students should have voices as stakeholders in the district. I'm glad none of us disagree with that. And as Hasbain said, there are a lot of initiatives already. In fact, one of my favorite things to see was seeing a student In fact, one of my favorite things to see was seeing a student that I mentor at the high school level, sitting next to the superintendent during several board meetings last school year as the student board of education representative. I want to see more of that, and I want to see more of these opportunities happen again and again and again. And something that I keep hearing from both parents and teachers as we knock on doors is people saying, when I was up there speaking to the board crying and my kid was next to me bawling their eyes out because a school was being closed, I didn't feel listened to. And so I've gotten to stand there and listen to these stories and listen to people, and that's more of what's going to happen when I'm elected to the school board.
Absolutely, and I just want to reiterate that this is actually one of the four principles of the Kansas redesign, is that students are, it's based on four principles: student success skills, community partnerships, real-world application, and personalized learning. And I would like to just take a mom brag moment and talk about my daughter, and she had a really great experience in Lawrence High School where she had a teacher who encouraged her to reach out to her elected officials, and she, in fact, lobbied for a bill from the beginning when it, from when it was introduced to completion where the governor signed it into law. So yes, some of us do talk to people beyond board members, and absolutely, and I think that during the community, I really fell in love with the community town halls. I think that as a board, we can continue that practice of town halls. Thank you. Again, my name is Rachel Stumbling Bear, and I'm running for one of the four-year terms. I, you should vote for me because I recognize that I would be one of seven. That means that I would not be making decisions alone, I'd be making them as a team with people, putting in the work to do the research, to making sure that I am up to date on current educational practices, speaking with teachers and students and community members to find out what they are seeing. I'd also push to make sure that more information about our school district is getting out, even if that means I have to knock doors in a non-campaign year to find those parents that we otherwise aren't getting a hold of.
My name is G.R. Gordon Ross. I'm running for reelection for one of the four-year seats. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting the forum and for you all for being here and participating. Local elections are the bedrock of our democracy, and I just want to thank you because your vote matters. I'm asking for your vote because I plan and will continue to do the work that I've always done, which is fight for increased wages for our staff, providing them with the tools that they need to continue to be successful and to continue to support students so that they can succeed in the life that they choose to pursue after they graduate and leave us.
Edward E.J. Gonzalez, I'm running for the four-year term as well. The reason that you should vote for me is really simple. There's been a lot of talk about the different things that have been happening, time and time again, school closing, teachers not getting paid enough, et cetera. It's time for change. I am a candidate for change. I will make sure that every concern that those teachers have are fulfilled and make sure that they have a voice that will be heard. I will go to the schools, I will knock on doors, I will send emails, but I'll also bring a level of change to how we are actually reporting our stuff. Like I said before, I would love to see, like, a TikTok or a larger YouTube following and that sort of thing. Once again, it's just about change at this point, and I think all of us wants to see it. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Yolanda Franklin, and I am running for one of the four-year spots. You should vote for me because I am you. I am the community. I am an everyday person. I'm a grandma of five. I love my grandkids to death, they're at my house every weekend, and I am going to be that bridge between the community and the school board. I will not tie you to a three-minute time limit when it's time to talk to me. You have all the time that you need. And so I would just be that community, I would be that boost-to-the-ground school board member that we're looking for.
Brandon Moore, running for a four-year term. I'm going to be a good steward of our taxpayers' money. I've got business savvy due to my background in the restaurants for the last 20 years. I'm not into the good old boy business. I have, I've been in the restaurant long enough that I know that if you take care of your people, they're going to take care of you. And that's what we need to do with our teachers and our students. I've been a bit aggressive tonight with some of our previous board members, so I do want to say, G.R. Gordon Ross has been leading the internet charge and getting our own internet in the school district and has done an amazing job with that. Shannon Kimball has been the president for her entire life, I think, on the school board, for a really long time, and has done an amazing job leading the school board. Carol Cady Blackwell, I have an amazing amount of respect for her as an advocate, standing up for what's right, voting against the tax break as well. As much as I say, I do have a lot of respect for the sacrifice and the time that they've put in into this role as an unpaid position, and I appreciate all of you guys' dedication as well.
I do believe education to be the bedrock of democracy and that we should protect it. Vote for me because I'm not afraid to say we need change. I will look deeply at issues I already have. I am willing to do the work. I will ask questions that are not being asked. I know what it's like to be in a classroom with 25 kindergarteners. It's pretty valuable for work on the board. I think if you think we, things have gotten worse in our district over the last decade instead of better, vote for me. These are public schools, they belong to all of us, and we must work together, listen to each other, be creative. A vote for me is a vote for equity, honesty, integrity, and transparency in public education, and I would really appreciate your vote November 7.
I'm Shannon Kimball. I'm running for the two-year, unexpired term. Thank you to the League and to all of you for being here this evening to let us share with you our vision for the future. There are so many things that I am proud of and that inspire me to want to continue doing this work, and I shared a few of those with you this evening in my comments. I bring a lot more to the table as a board member than just vague talking points and we need change. Change is good, but change needs to be also guided by experience and expertise. I bring dedication, accountability, integrity, transparency, and honesty to the work that I do. I have always been honest with the community about the work of the board and my own work on the board. I am a candidate of realistic, sustainable solutions that will position our district for success in the future, and I am willing to demand accountability while also being part of the solutions that we need to support our students. I'm asking for your support and your vote on November 7. Thank you very much.
I'm Ann Costel, and I'm running for one of the four-year spots. I'm committed to open and honest communication with the community, ensuring those school boards' actions are understood and accessible to all. And a few ways to increase transparency would involve some easy upgrades to our current district website. There should be a master calendar with all board and committee meetings on it. This way, any member of the public who wants to attend can do so. Every committee should have a page that includes information about what the committee does, who is on the committee, and meeting minutes from previous meetings. Another addition to the website is actually based off the city commission site. There you can look up any member of a committee and see not only their attendance, but their voting record. The public should have access to this information. I believe the board meeting agendas and relevant information should be posted in board docs earlier. This would give not only the board, but the public more time to review as well. I think these are small changes that can provide our community with greater access to what's going on and hopefully rebuild trust with the community. I will work closely with teachers, parents, students, and the community members to make informed decisions that reflect the needs and aspirations of our district. My focus will always be on what's best for our students. Their success and well-being will be at the forefront of any decision I make. I ask for your support.
My name is Kevin Coronado. I'm running for a four-year seat. Why you should vote for me is because I'm committed to this district. Any change, any decision that happens in the next four years is going to affect my family for the next 16, because my youngest isn't even in preschool yet. You should vote for me because I already have experience working with billion-dollar companies and sitting on their boards. I have experience managing budgets worth hundreds of millions of dollars and working with people across the aisle that I don't agree with, that there are times they do things I don't even like, and we are able to come together for a good resolution. I sit on the county, the county health board, and I'm able to sit with county and city leaders, and I'm able to make some of these choices that affect us every single day, and I will continue that work here.
Thank you. My name is Carol Cady Blackwood, and again, I hope that I can be one of the four votes for school board. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting today in the Lawrence Public Library. I spent a lot of summers here, engaged in the summer reading program, so thank you for that. And I would also like to acknowledge, while we're talking about voting, yesterday is the National Day for Voter Registration, but, you know, I think back and reflect on my grandparents, where, you know, they were born in 1901 and 1906, and we weren't even citizens until 1924, so, you know, we couldn't, we weren't, we couldn't vote till 1924, so, you know, I'm just really excited about it. I get, I majored in political science, so I get, like, really nerdy and geeky about voting. But my mom, she was a catalyst for me going back to, going to school. She said, there's no reason not to go to college when you live in Lawrence, Kansas, because you have Baker, Haskell, and KU. But as an educator activist, I will continue to support and defend our public schools through and continue to provide testimony against using taxpayer dollars to fund private schools. I was also appointed by Governor Laura Kelly to serve on the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Committee to promote restorative justice. I will continue to listen and uplift community voices at the school board or at the Kansas State House or the national level. And just last week, I met with a member from the White House Initiative on Indian Education, and they wanted to know how me, Carol Cady Blackwood, was able to get the Cherokee language started in public schools in Missouri, and I would like to bring that to Kansas. Thank you.
I'm Jody Meyer, and I'm seeking a four-year term. I was a substitute teacher on Friday for the first time this school year at Billy Mills Middle School, teaching sixth and seventh graders, and it reminds me of everything good that I have loved about USD 497 since my kids started here in 2008. The kids, the building administrators, the staff, the teachers, I feel like I'm even getting choked up about it. That's everything that is good. And I know that I sound somewhat negative when I talk about these problems, but if we don't acknowledge problems, we cannot solve problems. And when I spend three months trying to get a sliver of budget information and I don't receive it, when I do a deep dive in the committees that we have and we don't have a master list, and I'm told I need to contact every committee person to find out when committees meet, when we have a school board who talks about truancy issues, and we have more board members spending time on how we, what we call, not truancy, but some of the behavior issues, and we spend more time talking about verbiage on incidents and offenses rather than what is happening in our schools, that's where we have gone afar. And so if we continue doing what we're doing, then you're going to continue losing families. So if you need someone who's an independent, critical thinker, who's not afraid to go against the grain and ask questions, then I'm your candidate.